They're here for you. Anybody else here for a repository sale? I'm gonna, check, put it over there.
Uh, baseball signal.
Baseball, she's gonna baseball signal you. No one ever tells me to speak up. How are you? Uh... Here Lori, I have an extra. Can I?
There's one here too. Somebody want one? Jenna? Yeah, 'cause I got one from that there.
Thank you guys. You're welcome. Lori's like, "I'll get the, I'll get the..." Go ahead. Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, April 20th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Ms. Allen...
If everybody could, like, quiet down a little bit, the meeting is starting, okay?
Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon. Please stand for a moment of silent meditation.
Two weeks, two weeks ago, we remembered those who were traumatized by the shooting at Erie High. Tonight, sadly, we have a death to mourn. Antonio Yarger Jr., seven years old. Please remember him and his family and all of those who have been touched by gun violence in our city, not just in the last two weeks, but for the last years.
Moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today, first of all grateful that you allowed us to sit in these chambers today, oh Lord, and we are even grateful that the, the pews or the audiences filled today and that our constituents are rising up, oh Lord, and taking an interest in city government. We just ask that you be with those who are grieving and those who are in mourning, that you just add a special blessing unto them and that, uh, help with your spirit that we might make prudent and good decisions on behalf of the city and taxpayers in the residents of Erie. This we ask in your name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to this body of one nation, under the law, indivisible,verbal, physical, mental, all.
Approval of the minutes from the Wednesday, April 6th, city council meeting and bills for payment on April 22nd and April 29th. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
Thank you Lori. As I explained at the last meeting, we are trying to move some of our stuff up to the top of the agenda so we don't have to have everybody wait till the very end of the meeting. And tonight could be a very long meeting. We have a public hearing. We have a lot on our agenda. So I just described this as an Earth Day announcement and we will be celebrating Earth Day in two days. I asked city council tonight in our caucus session to consider creating a sustainability task force, which will examine a lot of environmental issues, both internally and externally in our community. This is something where we would use, uh, we have to figure out what, what format, um, the task force, what it would look like, how we would make sure that we have experts who can then give us recommendations on everything, you know, in a variety of areas. We've talked for months about whether, you know, what about electric vehicles for the, the various fleets that the, that the city pays for. We'll be doing some innovative things on recycling, but we have to actually go broader. So, uh, we had a task force that worked at, on historic preservation that led to the creation of the Historic Review Commission, which has some teeth. We have a historic preservation planner now for the city of Erie and, uh, the, um, environmental task force may lead to the creation or the recommendation that we create an environmental advisory council, which other municipalities throughout Pennsylvania have. So this is just the initial announcement. We have a lot of work to do to create the task force, to figure out the parameters of what we want the task force to accomplish and what timeframe they'll be working on to come back to recommend, for recommendations to, uh, city council. And I just wanted to remind everybody to make sure that you pay attention to the various Earth Day activities that are going on. There'll be things at Perry Square, I believe, on, uh, Friday and, and possibly Saturday. It's a lot of opportunities to think about cleanups, but think beyond that. What else can we do to, um, protect the precious planet that we have? So, that's all. And then we have, uh, we have repository sales, Lori? So is there anybody to speak about repository sales?
They're coming up.
Good evening. I'm here to, uh, my name is Tim Ward and located at 1617 East 26th Street. And I'm here to, uh, try to transfer property over to the Mount Evo Baptist Church.
Mr. Ward was here previously and it went under his name, so he's resubmitting it to change the name to the Mount Evo Missionary Baptist Church. It's property on Warful and East 26th Street?
That's right.
So it's just a resubmital of something that you've already passed for a different name? Do you want to give them a brief idea?
Well, actually, as I said before, we're just using a property for the upkeep of the neighborhood, making sure it, uh, it's kept up and it may be a possibility of a community garden. But other than that, we're pretty much maintaining that area, uh, far as keeping the grass mowing and the area around the church so that we can maintain the property.
Okay, and you did say that an urban garden is permitted, but it, as currently zoned, could not be made into a parking lot?
That is correct.
Okay, you understand that?
That's correct.
Does anybody else on council have any questions for Reverend? Is it Reverend Ward? Anybody have questions for Reverend Ward? Okay.
So, uh, would you be seeking to have it rezoned in order to, uh, be a parking lot?
No, no, not at this time.
Thank you. Lori, do we have to vote on this again then, or how will this...
Yeah, it'll come down at the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
The zoning office asked them to re-present.
Alright.
So you would know that there was a change.
Alright, okay. Thank you.
Any other repository sales?
How you doing? My name is Dykorn Plod. I'm at 1231... How you doing? Alright, my name is Dykorn Plod. I'm at 1231 East 21st Street. And I'm trying to get this property on Buffalo Road. It's vacant. We, me, my brother, he owned the lot next to it, so we looking at the expand the property.
Can you answer those questions?
Yes, um, we, I mean, we plan on, we gonna plan on, like, fencing it up, you know, keeping it clean, you know, keeping the grass. Right now, it's like high grass. It's garbage bags, trash, shopping carts on the property right now. And we own one, my brother owned the property next to it, so, like, we really see, like, it's no point of just keeping the one side of it clean and, and nobody doing anything to the ones next to it.
Did you say where the property was?
Yes, it's on Buffalo Road.
Near East 21st?
Do you have the address?
Yes, near, it's, it's around the corner from East 21st.
Anybody on council have any questions? Thank you. Are there any other repository sales? Repository sales, last call. Okay, now we move to the public comment portion and Gary Horton, uh, requested time to start off.
Good evening. I'm Gary Horton, 2046 East 19th Street. Mr. Mayor, council, citizens. We are now faced with the fact, council, my friends, that tomorrow is today. We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now. In this unfolding conundrum of life and history, there is such a thing as being too late. Procrastination is still the thief of time. Life often leaves us standing bare, naked, and dejected with a lost opportunity. Over the bleached bones and jumbled residuals of numerous civilizations are written the pathetic words, "Too late." Now let us begin. Now let us rededicate ourselves to the long and bitter, but beautiful struggle for a new city. That was Dr. Martin Luther King, and of course, he said, "For a new world." I say, "For a new city." We all know about the horrified, uh, we, we all know about and are horrified by the high-profile incidents of gun violence affecting our community. Shootings in the hall of Erie High. Seven-year-old Antonio Yarger Jr. shot last week in our neighborhood. The death of Patrick Liola in Grand Rapids, Michigan, who had close ties to Erie's Congolese community. Our youth's mental health was not in good shape before these incidents or before the pandemic. The growing restlessness and idleness of our youth presents us with a challenge of how to help in the fierce urgency of now. Status quo is not working. Nothing we do is working if we just look at the increase in poverty, the increase in violence. Most kids aren't bad. These younger kids need structured, supervised time outside of school to help keep them on the right track. The ones who are 14 and up need opportunities to work. That's the biggest investment we should be making right now. Youth serving, youth serving programs need more than a short deadline, online competitive grant for support. Too many were shut out or left out of the process. I appreciate the allocation made to MCIC or to UECDC through MCIC on behalf of these young people who intend programs, who are, or who are employed at the center, but more needs to be done. When I look at the seven of you up there, you're representatives of the people. Your, two of the top responsibilities you have are policymakers and budgeting. You are the representatives and the voice of the people in the community. And, and when you think about the fierce urgency of now, I urge you to consider the time that you have left and to do something now. When policymaking and budgeting decisions are centered on a narrow group of kids who are willing to pick up a gun and do violence, the only focus cannot be law enforcement. We can't put all our eggs in one basket. The majority of kids are left behind. We have to invest in the rest. Their families need the city to prioritize equitable development with support for community benefit agreements. Now is the time. Many of you campaigned on that, but we haven't seen one policy introduced here regarding CBAs, not one. Many of you talk about a civilian review board, but there hasn't been one policy put on the table in this forum regarding a civilian, a police or civilian review board. You have to balance law enforcement spending with civilian review board so we don't have a Pat- Patrick Liola here. We have a sizable new American community. That could very easily happen here. I brought some young people with me here tonight to talk a little bit about themselves.
Gary, are they gonna talk individually? I just want to let everyone...
Not all of them.
Okay, but your five minutes are up.
I'm done.
Okay, I did, because we're having a public hearing at eight o'clock, then we will resume the public comments. So we can still get a few more, at least one more comment in before we go to the public hearing, but I didn't know if the kids were gonna speak at the podium after the public hearing, just so...
You all have read the study of the economic impact of new Americans. If you want our city to thrive and grow again, give these kids a reason to want to stay here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Adal Silva. I, I am nine years old. I, I'm in third grade. I go to St. James School and my family is from Liberia and Puerto Rico. And I am here to support the youth program because it helps people with their actions. There, it benefits them and it helps them with jobs that will give them a good life.
Thank you.
Sir, could you say your name again for me, please?
Adal Silva.
I got nothing.
He signed in.
Oh, great. Your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Yede Brema. I live, um, 20... 2916 Negro Road. My name is Yede. I'm 17 years old. My, my family is from Liberia, West Africa. I'm in the 11th grade at Harbor Creek High. The reason why we're here today is to talk about the youth program. Without the youth program, we won't have new opportunities for young boys and girls and we won't have a working experience. Because in this life, we need to know about how life goes, how life, you know, live and, like, live in life. Throughout this program, I learned a lot. I learned how kids are, they're really, they're not stable in one point. They move around a lot because they want to see new things. So without this program, if you take it away from us, we won't know how, how life is, like a child. The child, little kids always go around. They always like to play around. They like to see new things. They're not in one spot. So without this program, we won't, we won't know how to live, how to get new opportunities from other people. And not every kid is a bad kid. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Option Bujil. I'm 15-year-old and one of the youngest working, employing Mr. Horn Youth Program. My family is from Nepal. Oh, address? 3918 East End, oh. Yeah, it's in San, yes. My family is from Nepal and I know how to speak about two languages. I'm in ninth grade and I go to Erie High School. The reason I'm here is to ask you guys to help us kids who are in bad shape and are in need of new opportunities and to gain education and money. And we ask you that you helped us to learn and earn money. Thank you very much.
We still have about six minutes before that public hearing. That clock is fast, so...
Hello, my name is Rukyal Masari. I go to Grover Cleveland and I'm in fifth grade. I go to an after-school program and they're happy with my work and I'm happy to be there.
Lamont Higginbottom, 4331 Briggs Avenue. Mr. Mayor, council, I stand before you today because, uh, as president of the African-American Concerned Clergy, we submitted an ARP proposal only to be informed that we did not submit an ARP proposal. As you know, or hopefully you know, the African-American Concerned Clergy has been at the forefront of issues and city chaos for quite some time. On Saturday, I have the unfortunate task of eulogizing a seven-year-old. But it's not the first time. It's been every time. I've had to stand and encourage families and pick up the pieces that are dropped. The churches that make up the African-American Concerned Clergy work hard in this city. We open our doors and our pulpits to politicians to come out and put forth agendas and your, um, your attitude for the city and your abilities to help the people of this city. I know that the mayor's agenda is to eradicate racism in this city and I have publicly supported the mayor. I've publicly supported this council. I'm asking you for special privilege, the privilege that has been afforded to other clergy in this city. I'm asking for special privilege. I've printed out emails between myself, Chris Groner, and other ARP council people, proving that they received my proposal, telling me we've received your proposal, showing where I was diligent in responding and making sure that things were done properly, only to get an email, an automated email, which I was told I was the only one to receive, only to find out other organizations received the email as well. And the email just simply says, "Sorry, you did not fulfill the timeline." And the email just simply says, "Sorry, you did not fulfill the timeline." I sat on the ARP council. I knew the rules. I helped with the process. I'm pretty smart, I think. Sure, I hit the submit button. I've printed off the emails, the budget, and a copy of the proposal. I'm simply asking that you help the African-American Concerned Clergy continue to do a great work. And even if we don't receive ARP funds, by the grace of God, I know, help will come from somewhere. Our attitude toward this council, our attitude toward our wonderful mayor will not change. And our attitude toward Erie, Pennsylvania will not change. We will continue to fight and fight hard to eradicate violence, racism, and poverty. As the AACC, we are clergy members that care. When our schools hurt, we hurt. When there's homicide and our phones ring, like on your phone, Mr. Mayor, our phones ring too, 3:00 in the morning, to let us know it's happened again. And we get out of our beds, and we try to pick up the pieces, we try to put a balm to soothe the pain of loved ones. Help us. I'm asking you. And even outside of my character, I'm begging you. Help us so we can continue to do this work. I have the eight copies here, one for the mayor and one copy for every council person. These are the emails, as well as the proposal and the budget. Whatever we can get from you all would be a great help. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amaya Sharif, and I'm 10 years old. My school is Joanna Connell, and I'm in fourth grade. And what I like about the after-school program is that we learn and we have tutors that help us with our math and all of our other needs.
Thank you.
My name is Keith Baker. My name is Keith Baker. I'm nine years old. I go to Lincoln Elementary School. What I like about the after-school program is we have tutors. I like doing my work. Some of us go on computers or tablets to do some of our homework, and that is it.
Thank you. Zach, we have to move on to the public hearing unless, you're real short.
It's gonna be really brief. My name is Zachary Sharif. I live 2702 East Avenue. My concern, we run an after-school program just like Mr. Horan mentioned. We also submitted an ARP grant to hire extra tutors. We have a lot of incoming students, and we submitted our application ahead of time, and the only response we got, it was, our application was insufficient. How can we get a response back that says, "Application received," and we were denied? And this ARP fund is supposed to impact the community that's affecting the most, is these youth. And if we don't, it's just gonna be ongoing thing. And I myself have five kids in a public school, and the way things are going, I'm almost on the verge of getting out of the city. So we need to do something. Thank you.
And you have to swear people in, right? Or does Lori do that?
Court reporter.
Court reporter, okay.
So, can everyone hear me? This is the time for a public hearing. There is a proposal for a waterfront conditional use. That proposal has been submitted by Scott's Bayfront Development Incorporated, and it's described as Harbor Place Soaring Eagle. Anyone that believes they would like to testify, and I use that word, that's an important legal term, anyone that wants to talk to council and offer any testimony or statements about the proposal, you have the right to do so, but it's required that you would be sworn under oath. So anyone that would anticipate talking to council and offering testimony, if you could, please stand and raise your right hand. And the court reporter will swear you in.
Do you and each of you swear or affirm the testimony you give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and not the puppet truth? Please answer by saying, "I do."
Let the record reflect that the witnesses are sworn. Do we have a representative from Scott's Bayfront Development Incorporated to tell us about the project? While he's coming up, I will point out to council that this is a proposal that has been before the design review, the planning commission, and in this case, also the zoning hearing board for the city. This is now the opportunity for the developer to propose what they want to do, council to listen, and then ultimately make a decision. Mr. Sanford.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Mike Sanford, 4721 Atlantic Avenue, and I'm the surveyor and engineer that is helping the Scotts with this application. So I just have a little presentation here, just to bring you up to speed with our proposal. We're here this evening to discuss a conditional use application to add the Soaring Eagle zip line as commercial recreation to the Harbor Place project. The applicant, as Mr. Betza indicated, is Scott's Bayfront Development, Inc., and it's also Scott's Ohio, Inc. They're the owners of the property on both the north and south sides of Front Street. As you know, the property is own waterfront commercial, and that zoning district does permit a variety of uses, including commercial recreation. So as such, the Soaring Eagle is an appropriate use in this zoning district. Existing uses on the property are the Hampton Inn Hotel, Oliver's Beer Garden, and off-street parking. This conditional use site plan that we submitted does show the relationship of the existing facilities to the proposed zip line. The requirements of Section 306 were reviewed with both the design review and planning commission in March, and we met all those requirements as we had shown at the planning commission and design review. So just a few highlights about the Soaring Eagle specifically. The Soaring Eagle is a thrill ride. It's a zip line, it's for all ages, and it's for all ages because they're in a seated position. They're in a two-seat thing and strapped in. So it's really from young to old. The Soaring Eagle, you get loaded at the northern end, down by the water. There's a loading platform. You get loaded in your seat, and then you get pulled in a backwards position. So you're gonna get pulled south across Front Street, and then you'll pause there for a few seconds, and you'll be overlooking the harbor and the nice view. And then you'll be released and zip back to the north. So you both load and unload from the north end of the project, at the takeoff tower. The zip line at the southern end, this pole, is 130 foot tall, and the overall length of the zip line is about 640 feet. It's also just important to note that the support pole at the southern end, the 130-foot pole, is actually really small footprint. It's only about a 20-inch diameter pole, so it doesn't block views of the bluff and those type of things. It's just essentially like a large utility pole. We did provide on our site plan the appropriate off-street parking. Zoning officer did review it and found it to be acceptable. The project does also comply with all setbacks required. We did submit a landscaping plan. It was prepared by Dahl Kemper Landscape Architects here in Erie. It shows the number of plantings, the type of trees, where they are, and they are themed with what's already down there with the first phase of the project. On our updated site plan, since I was here last with the other conditional use application, but on our updated site plan, I did add, I hatched for you, so it could be seen, all of the areas that are currently open space. We had a lot of discussion last time. So I went ahead, between that meeting and this, and I went ahead and hatched everything that is currently open space.
Is it designated as, I hate to interrupt you, but we did have a lot of discussion about that. And fortunately, Ed Kissel has provided the public access plan that Scott Enterprises submitted originally, and it does call those open spaces parks. We had discussion about whether they could be called public parks, but your documents called them public parks. Public Park Half an Acre, which is where the golf course is gonna be. Pocket Park, one quarter of an acre. Public Park, half an acre. And Central Park, half an acre. So are any of these actually now called public parks? Because it's no longer a question of semantics. It's a question of our duty to not let stuff slip through that was promised and is now being talked about as, "Well, no, we were just talking about allowing you to look at the bay." I really want an answer to that question or an explanation as to whether now your revised plans say public park and not open space or open air.
That plan you're speaking of, that's prepared by another company, not mine. I'm aware of it, but I can only speak to the plan I prepared. My plan does say open space.
It doesn't say public parks, though. It no longer says public parks. Is that correct? Is that your testimony?
Correct.
That your plan does not, even though you didn't prepare this, you must have looked at it, though, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so did you specifically say, "Eh, let's not call it a public park anymore, let's not call it a pocket park, let's call it open space?"
Well, I can tell you why I called it open space. I called it open space because that's a requirement imposed, that's the exact wording by the zoning hearing board that imposed the requirement. They didn't call it a park. So I'm using the language zoning hearing board used. That's to be consistent.
And the language that I'm going to use is that we're gonna, at least in my opinion, I'm not gonna vote for this tonight until we add some conditions.
I understand. Well, can I just continue? Just a few more things. So at the zoning hearing board meeting, I believe it was last week, they did authorize a dimensional height variance, so the support pole could be 130 foot tall. That was reviewed and approved last week. And my office also did submit to the city engineering office a aerial easement so that we may cross the city street, Front Street. We submitted that to Jason Sayers. So like I mentioned, the Soaring Eagle conditional use plan was submitted, reviewed and approved, recommended for approval by the planning commission, design review, and we actually went to the planning commission and re-reviewed the plan yesterday at their meeting in April as well. So I know today's just a public hearing, but I'm here to answer any questions I can do. Mr. Scott is here, should you have any questions for him? And I don't know, that's the end of my presentation.
Questions from council?
I'm personally in agreeance with Liz. I'm not gonna be voting on this until I know what the public park or public access or open space, the conditional use, is going to be implemented for the public at this rate. I know that in order to get the land, there were things that were bargained, and I don't feel as though the public's getting what they had agreed upon when the original purchase was put into place, so I agree with Liz.
So my question is, with consideration of the city street and us vacating the air rights to it, so does that shift liability and possible liability of something that may happen? Obviously, this is going across the city street, and so in worst-case scenario, something happens and things could fall on the city street, injure a car or something, and so is any language in this agreement that shifts liability from the city to the entity that would like to build?
We have not been provided the agreement. The way, this agreement is similar to other agreements. It's a zip line, so it's different, I acknowledge. But it's similar to other businesses that have crossed the city street. One example would be like a pedestrian walkway that crosses from one side of the road to the other, aerially. I understand your concern, but the agreement hasn't been provided to us. It certainly can include that, if that's your concern. When the agreement's made by city solicitor and it goes back between the parties, it certainly could be part of the agreement. But we don't have the agreement to know that it's in there as of today.
Thank you. The city's standard easement form that we utilize does place requirements on the developer and does require insurance to be held by the developer to protect the city from any potential liability. That has not gone to my desk yet, but when that gets passed up, those would be provisions that would be in any easement agreement.
Any other questions before we move on to additional witnesses?
Yeah, I got one. So, you know, a lot of the kids get to go Splash Lagoon. That was one of the things you guys talked about last time. How many of Gary's kids want to go to the grand opening if this thing passes? How many of those kids can you bring? Mr. Scott, come up. I'm just an engineer. All right. I see him smiling back there, but that'd be greatly appreciated if this thing goes forward, if the city kids that may otherwise not have the financial resources to do this on a regular basis and enjoy it, at least for one day on that grand opening. I'd love to see all those kids Gary brought today. Be right back there for it.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Sanford?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanford.
I have a quick question. Are we talking semantics when we're concerned about the public parks? I think we all are here. And you're talking public spaces. Are we talking about the same thing?
Well, again-
Or not?
I think we're talking, yes. But semantics, I think, is important. Ms. Flores said three things. I didn't want to correct her, but she said public access, of which this project doesn't have a responsibility for public access, just so we're clear. And public parks is on that illustrative plan, and that plan actually says illustrative in the corner. But I talk about open space because that is what the zoning hearing board's actual words were. So to me, I'm trying to use the correct term, open space. The other term, they're not in the zoning hearing board's decision. That's why I say open space, because that, to me, is the proper term.
But then you have to define what you mean by open space. How would you define open space?
Unfortunately, the zoning hearing board did not define the term, and it's not a defined term in the orders.
So you don't have a definition of open space?
I'm not the zoning hearing board. I work in a multitude of townships. Every township or city has their own definition of open space. They're all reasonably the same. You know, I mean, it's an area that's open for use, for enjoyment. Those are some of the words that are used. It's certainly not a building and those type of things.
It's certainly not what?
A building. It's an open area.
Right, so we're kind of back to the idea that now you can look somewhere, but you can't sit there, you can't hang out there. I mean, you aren't gonna be able to go to the golf course where your revised agreement says approximately something, square feet of green space with river rock mulch surrounding the mini golf hole. So it's green, but it's not, it's not like you can go and plop on the golf course if you aren't playing mini golf, correct?
Right, no, I understand what you're saying. The plan you're referring to, those words are required by Section 306 for a landscaping reason, and that's why that plan has to use those type of words. It's a landscaping plan. Again, I'm trying to just talk about the open space in more general.
So now we have three different terms. We have green space because it's required by a landscaping plan. We have open space, which is not very definite. And then we have the famous public park reference on this that you didn't do, so you were not involved in the public park thing. But I guess what- But I guess what we should have done was to ask the original architect to come here and describe what that architect meant when they said that there would be a half-acre public park, a half-acre central park, a half-acre public park, and a quarter-acre public park. I mean, I wish I had known that you weren't involved in the original thing, and it would have been nice to hear how the semantics of public park got replaced somewhere along the way or lost, or that it was just a great way to present it, to get that approval and get that $5 million from the state. Because we know that the Scots have invested in this, but we also know that there is public money that went into this, and that has to be a primary consideration. So I don't mean to be picking on you because you weren't involved, but it seems like we maybe needed a whole course in, you know, architectural landscaping to be able to make a reasonable decision as city council members. I'm sorry I don't have that background. So we'll move on to, I guess, the next witnesses unless anybody else has any questions.
Someone had also brought up a question about the design and had suggested sidewalk access to the library as being a priority, as to something council should request. Is that, you were involved in that conversation, is that?
Yes.
What would that look like?
And it will look like it. Here's my answer. Today, we're here to talk about the conditional use. Basically, this board considering adding a use to the property, that's what we're doing. Should you ultimately vote on this, whenever that shall be? I have a responsibility to submit a site plan to the zoning office. Now, the use is approved. I have to submit to the zoning office and also engineering office. When I do submit to the engineering office, they will require, and I will propose, a sidewalk to go on the south side of Front Street from where it leaves off at the parking area, kind of on the westerly side, all the way over to the library sidewalk. It'll be, basically, what's not there today, it's grass, but we would, we are going to propose a sidewalk to the engineering for their review. So it will be a sidewalk completing that from where it leaves off to the west, to the library, to the east.
So as Liz brings up concerns about public park and semantics and drawings from previous, you know, that's something that I presume would be a conditional use that would be applied to this, so that it would be in writing this time, that it wouldn't be a matter of semantics going forward, and that there would be a public sidewalk connecting.
I have no problem. Should you want to say, you know, "We approve the use, and we want to have a sidewalk on the south side of Front Street." We are going to propose it, but I have no problem with that being a condition. It's totally appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanford. Do we have any additional witnesses from Scott's development? Do we? Oh, I'm not trying to make you, I just... Do we have any, and we have both Nick Scott Senior and Nick Scott Junior here. We may have questions for you. Is there anyone else present that wishes to offer testimony regarding the proposed
Ed Kessel, 2815, Sigsbee, mayor, council president, council members. You see already, there's been a change of the location of the zip line. It has now been moved probably a couple hundred, three feet, 203 feet or more to the west. It was proposed, as the diagram showed, by the tower, the Pennalec Tower. Now it is over by State Street. Again, the public access plan that was approved and went through the process that shows the four parks, and now we're coming up with other changes. The proposed sidewalk, you could have conditioned that because that's where the zip line was going to go in, and it was, could be a safety issue not having a sidewalk, as the landscaper said, that that may not be a problem after all. But again, here's another change, and I think if it was run through the design and review committee and also the planning, they might have some objection to where it's being located. Where it was proposed, it's pretty well screened by the library museum and somewhat by the tower. Now it's exposed from basically the southwest corner of the property, State Street area in the bayfront, over the top of the existing parking lot and to the east of the hotel and landing basically in the same place, I believe, where the diagram shows. I mean, we've been told and shown on drawings and explained, newspaper articles and all, and the public access plan is what was used by the design review and the planning commission and prior city council to approve the different steps along the way. I have no objection with the Scots changing some of their personal stuff on the property, but when you pledge public parks as a carrot to get the public interested and in favor of it, and now we don't have a public park, we have a hotel, we have a beer garden, we have a golf course, we have a new restroom, and yet we don't have anything for the public. The council gave approval on the final variance to allow three additional stories to the hotel to be built. That is a physical tangible asset. The zoning hearing board, when they heard that, put a covenant in or a mitigation that about 25,000 square feet of tangible land would be used to compensate for that space up there. That's not open space anymore. That is tangible building that has blocked, if you want to look at it, the open space. So the public should get the 25,000 on a plan before anything else is done. It's getting to the point where the development is taking place, and the public who was promised per the plan, not anything more than what's on the plan, has gotten nothing. So I encourage council to look at putting conditions on whatever you decide to do. This zip line goes from property number four, the four acres on the south side, to the five acres on the north side. You've got two parcels of land that we're talking about, so you can look at conditions, and council has the final say on it. Even though if they meet all the conditions that we have in zoning, it's still reasonable, reasonable that a condition or conditions can be attached by city council at a meeting like this. You have the final say. You can, you go over the planning commission, you go over the design review, their recommendations because you feel that there could be something that may not have been brought up during those two meetings, which are public meetings, but they're not a public hearing like you're having here tonight. So again, I suggest council look at these things, and these are the times to get what's needed. And, you know, the zip line being moved is just another indication that the things have changed. You gave up on a half-acre park along the most valuable piece of property, a green area, at the last council meeting, and I hope that you look at this one, even though Mr. Mel Weatherspoon, you know, says they didn't break any laws. But I think they break the law of the handshake with the general public, and when they put a document out that shows the parks for the public use, and not one has been accomplished for the general public, yet $5 million was given by the state, our taxpayer money, to enhance the building of the beautiful place they do have down there. Not against those projects, I'm just against what has been told on how they got the projects, and yet the public didn't get what they were promised, at least in the documents that I have. So I thank you.
Ed, before you go, I think one of the values of having you having monitored bayfront development ever since it was first opened, when we had the Parkway go in, is that you have institutional knowledge. And, you know, I wasn't on council when this was originally, you know, when the first variant or the conditional use was granted or whatever it was. I wondered if you could also, for the record, explain how council was able to put in additional conditions for the convention center, because I think that's important to know. This would not be a, this would not be unprecedented to have city councils come back and say, "We like this, but X, we would like this."
Well, back in 2005, when the convention center was going in, there were issues that pertained to public access. At that time, the convention center was leasing the West Public Dock in the Sassafras Pier from Erie Western Port Authority. They ended up buying it eventually, but the north side of the West Public Dock, where the Cove is, was being proposed to be closed to traffic for a service road so that they could deliver the groceries and whatever. We intervened, and we got that open for the general public so they could see the bay water and they can drive by instead of being screened off. We also got involved with the fourth floor of the parking garage, a lot of people don't know this today, that there is an observation deck up there for the public to use. However, it was supposed to have proper signage, and the proper signage is about an eight-and-a-half by 11 sheet of paper that's in the hallway between the lower level of the parking garage and the Cove restaurant. Nobody knows it's up there. The other thing is the Sassafras Pier where the convention center went in, on the back side of that, there is a access, a small beach area, that the convention center authority, Erie Events, is supposed to maintain, and they haven't done that, and that's for access for people in the wintertime who wanted to go on the bayfront. There are 10 free parking places there for the public along where the, is the Pier Six restaurant is, that we got in the deed of transfer way back that provides 365 days, 24 hours a day, free parking for the public down there. We also got in the agreement that if the events that were not taking place or if the convention center was not being used, that 55 parking places at the northwest corner, which would be up towards the hotel, would be open for the general public, with the exception, if they had any events going on, that would be void. We got one half-hour free parking in the ramp on the West Public Dock, where you could take somebody, you might out to lunch, or you just want to take a quick ride, you could go in for one half-hour free of charge, go up to the fourth floor of the parking garage and sit up there if you want and have a drink or eat a sandwich and come out, and you're not charged. So there were things that, at the convention center, that city council ended up mandating that they be put in the agreement, in an ordinance, which I have, and it's Exhibit A, which I can reference, that states what I just spoke about at the convention center. There have been other little amenities throughout the bayfront that have been looked at and with city council's approval. Even though the design review and the planning commission have okayed, city council does have the final say. Even though all the conditions are met by the developer, you still have a final say, a reasonable final say, on what you feel that should be done per the evidence and/or the comments that you have heard.
And Ed, I'm going to ask you for one more thing. I know some of my council colleagues are going to start to say, "Let's move the road, move the show on." You know, I can take it. But I want you to say, why public access is your passion? Because you and I go back really far. You know that from having, you know, when I worked at the morning news and then at the Erie Times News, I had an editor who totally understood why public access is a priority and why it's important. So just in one or two sentences, explain why we fight for this.
I am 79 years old. I was raised 511 East Second Street. I, as a child, enjoyed the waterfront by trespassing over the railroad tracks to enjoy the fishing in the water and the swimming down at the Port Authority. The water is the magnet of Erie. Without that water, Erie is not that, it's great, but the water is the magnet that people come by. Eddie knows, he lived on Third and Wallace. But again, it is the magnet that attracts people. And as one developer said many years ago in the 80s, that "We're going to have as much public access as you want." And I asked the question, "Could that person come and put his feet in the water on your property?" And there wasn't an answer. So again, by being able to get to the water and touch the water, not just looking at it, is why I fight or bring up these issues across the bayfront and why we wrote and council approved the ordinances that provided the 12-foot walkways. I believe we have more public access than Cleveland and Erie on our bayfront because of the people in council who took the testimony and made the decisions to do what we have today. The 50-foot height, you know, the reason for that real quick is that people on the bluff, we were fortunate, we have a promenade from Poplar Street to Parade Street, 10-foot walkway on the bluff that people can walk on and enjoy the view from the top. We have six miles of bayfront public access along the bayfront from Frontier Park up to Penn State Baron, and we have thousands of feet of public access within the piers that you can walk out and you can enjoy biking, hiking, et cetera, because I helped put that in that ordinance back in the 80s. So again, my desire is to have future generations be able to use our waterfront and get the things that the developers have promised. We were fortunate to get our foot in the door and get the ordinances on the books that the public does have a sharing of our waterfront in probably 95% of the area that we have on the waterfront. Unfortunately, with the Port Authority and the Water Authority owning quite a bit, it's great to be able to say those things and have the support of council, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any other individuals that wished to offer testimony?
My name is Freda Tepper, and I live in Erie. I don't have to give my address, right? Anyway, I am so sorry you guys approved the putt-putt, but I just think this zip line over Front Street is sort of an accident waiting to happen, or at least a distraction we really don't need there. Also, I was there looking around, and if it's truly moved, as Ed said, I'd love to see the new site plan so I could see if it's where I thought it was from last time. But they talked about how some part of it, maybe parking, was going to go in by the substation. It certainly appears to me that there's some wetland there, and I understand, where is the substation on there? Anyway, it appears to me that there's some kind of water feature, and I believe that the area between the Maritime Museum and the new hotel is some kind of water conveying structure. So my question is, is there actually some wetland on the south side of Front Street? And is it being appropriately managed in this process? It sure seems to me, like I remember when this crazy hotel was first approved, yet another removal of my visual access to the bayfront, that it said "Park," that there was going to be park commensurate with the additional area from the height. And now, then I heard green space and open space, and Shelley and Humphrey and I were there today, we even talked to Nick Scott, and I said, "Where, where are you going to even put the putt-putt? But where is this park? Where is the open space? Open space is open. Where is access? Where is visual access to the bayfront?" Where is visual access to the Bayfront? This, it just doesn't make any sense that we're just giving away the best of what we have.
So, when I, when I was asking about sidewalks, you're, you're my sidewalk expert.
Yes. There is not now a continuous sidewalk from State Street to the library, I don't think, on either side of the street.
Right.
Of Front Street.
Right, so with the, you know, if that is made a condition, is there anything that I need to be looking for when I'm talking to them about that?
Continuous sidewalk with adequate width, and that there are curb cuts, functional curb cuts, that unlike some of the curb cuts that are there by the library from the parking lot, that the curb cut go to the building with a clear stop for pedestrian kind of crosswalk. Because there is one set of curb cuts that there is no right-of-way to pedestrians, but it's the one everybody uses.
So this is something where, you've talked about our inadequate standards in regards to this for a while, so I'm just seeing, like, this is something where we can make conditions. We can address those usually inadequate standards in a specific case. So is there anything else that I need to ask for?
There's a bus station there, there's a bus shelter, and I don't know that there's an easy way to, people should be able to get from both sides of Front Street to that bus shelter. Right now, we walked from the library around the Bo, the Niagara, and, and we were trying to get up to, up towards, to walk to Dobbins Landing, and there was nothing that, when we got onto that thing, to the east of the Niagara, to tell us that we were gonna run into a gate. We, this time, we were able to take the brand-new sidewalk that is now there and get up that way, but what the heck? I'm, I, if the sidewalk is closed, why doesn't it say, "A sidewalk is closed"? You, you know.
I just wanted to try to-
You got, don't get me started on that.
No, no, we had one shot. I wanted to-
No, there should be, there should be, you know, unencumbered sidewalks that go from State Street all the way down Front Street, the whole way, on both sides, and, you know, not interrupted by, all of a sudden, there's, the sidewalk's there and then it's not there. And there's some kind of crazy curve in the road, and, and I don't know how you're gonna get around that. But if you're gonna get people from one side of the sidewalk to the other, there, there needs to be signage that says, "Stop for pedestrians."
Thanks.
Thank you.
Kathleen Schoff, twenty-four, thirty-seven, East Forty-third Street. And I'm not, like, against or for the zip line, but I do want to address a lot of things. And one of them is what you mentioned about free students coming. And there are a lot more people, I'm sure, as you know, than just Gary's kids out there that would not be able to afford that. Today on the news, it said the Erie Historical Museum on Sixth and Chestnut is open on Sunday afternoon, free of charge. And they do that not just once, and I think that's absolutely wonderful. There was a program that my nephew did, that I took him as an aunt in the summertime, where all third or fourth graders in the public schools and in Catholic schools, private schools, got free admissions with an adult for different museums in the summer. I don't think they do that anymore, but it was an excellent program that I did for a few summers with different stu, my nephew and my grandkids. So that would be wonderful if something like that were reinstated, where people could go for free. So that's one thing. Another thing is benches are definitely, definitely needed. I was in Gatlinburg in October on an eighty-degree day this past year, and we were in line for a ski lift that would take you up a mountain where there were zip lines and lots of touristy things. And we waited in line for a very long time. While I know Erie is not Gatlinburg, however, new things definitely attract people, they all want to be there, trying it for the first time, yada, yada, yada. But the people who are in line are going to, like, I saw, we saw people pass out, okay? Like, that's how long we were waiting in line. But you need places to sit for the grandparents, for the aunts and the uncles, because not everyone can stand. There are so many people out there with neuropathy issues, standing issues, and so you're definitely going to have to have a lot of benches. I think there should be some kind of a traffic study, because rubbernecking, as people are driving by, will cause accidents, and, you know, that's something that you don't think of. But think of, like, when you're driving down Peninsula Drive, the driver hopefully isn't looking at the roller coaster, but there are issues with driving, and there's so many distracted drivers these days. We talk about open spaces, that, let's say Erie Insurance has open spaces, but a woman did talk to me a few years ago, I can't remember exactly, but she said she was laying in the grass in one of the Erie Insurance open spaces that they have. And she was asked to be on the move by the Erie Insurance Police. So an open space, does it designate a public space?
Right.
You know? And she wasn't, she wasn't drinking, she wasn't doing drugs, she was just enjoying being in the grass with the sky above her, and had to leave, like, there was no ifs, ahs, or buts. So I just want to talk to you about that. So, rubbernecking, benches needed, free days, definitely. And really, I really enjoy it down there. All of you know that I go down there almost once a day, and I'm in that whole area. And unfortunately, I have some leg issues, and I don't have that opportunity to, like, walk, walk, walk until I get to my car. And now I do have to rest. And sometimes there's just no places to rest, so there definitely needs to be more benches, not just for myself, but like, for all those people out there. Thank you.
Mr. Sanford, there was a question concerning wetlands, and I saw you get up. Are you in a position to address that question?
Yes, we had a wetland study done a few years ago, and there are no wetlands on the property. But I was, the reason I was gonna come back up for council is Mr. Kissel made a comment that, that the plan was, was adjusted, the Sawing Eagle location, and it was. And I explained that to zoning officer Welsh of why it was changed. It was changed due to an easement, an electric easement on the east side of the substation. That easement is exclusive, so there can be, the Sawing Eagle could not be east of the, of substation. That's why, when I talked to zoning officer Welsh and explained that to him, and said we would be moving it to the westerly side, he asked me to submit a new site plan, which I did, and he asked that that plan go back to the City Planning Commission, which it did. And that's, that's what I mentioned in my testimony, that we did go back to the Planning Commission at their April meeting to re-review the plan. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Sanford. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer testimony regarding this use?
My name is Howard Bibbs. I lived in Erie. I came down here to talk about something else, but listening to this zip line, I don't, I, you know, I watch a lot of television, as y'all might already know. And it's one thing to have a zip line that's going over land, where somebody, if, if something happened, they splatter in the ground. They don't be splattering all over the street, cars ain't running over the crap like they're, like they're dead rodents or something. All right? And then I've seen where they have zip lines going over water, so if they fall, they fall into water. Now, I don't know where the zip line idea came from, but that's a screw-up. I'm just gonna come out and say, "Y'all can beat around the bush about sidewalks and benches to sit down. I don't care if nobody sit down." And then you're gonna have people going up on a, standing on a stand this big. I don't think I could stand on a stand that big. Then you, what, a hundred some feet in the air? What, we have, we have stunt people doing this stuff, or what? I'm, I'm telling you, I think this is a terrible idea. And then one key thing that I heard was, "We do this a lot in, in townships." This is a freaking city. This is not no township. In townships, you got farms, you got open land everywhere. If they fall, they fall, they, they hit the ground, they got a chance to live. If they fall out there on that highway, they don't have no chance to live. If they hit any concrete anywhere, they don't have no chance to live. So I don't even know why you even considering a zip line. And if they want a zip line, why can't they do it up, let them go over ninety? Let them go over ninety. There's a whole bunch of land up there, let them go over ninety. I came down here to talk about something else, and they talking about some freaking zip line? Y'all wasting your time. But I will be back to talk about what I came down here to talk about. If I would screw that zip line, that ain't right. That ain't right, that ain't for Erie.
We will resume-
That ain't for no little kids. That ain't, that ain't, you know, I mean, you watch TV, you, you, you see grown people doing it, and they, they have stunts.
Uh-huh.
They have stunt people doing it, actors don't even want to do it, and they getting paid millions of dollars.
We will have, resume public comments after the public hearing is done.
Yeah, don't leave, Mr. Bibbs. You came all the way down here, it'll only be a few more minutes, if you could indulge-
Well, I still wanted to say something about that zip line.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely, so.
I still wanted to say something about that zip line. I done sat here all, all day. I wanted to say something about that zip line. I just think that, that ain't, that ain't the best thing, that's not the best thing. And then let me just say this, people talking about the waterfront, waterfront has, people have had wars over waterfront. Wars over waterfront. The Pope had, had wars over waterfront, back in the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen hundreds. Waterfront has been the most important thing of any township. And the one thing I see that Erie does, we give away the waterfront. That's the most stupidest idea I ever heard of. And y'all gonna entertain that? I don't care who it's for, and who it's for, I kinda like them. They do things, I like that. But this is the wrong thing to do. And if they want a zip line, let them, let them go over the hotel. Let them go over seventy-nine or something, let them, you know, somewhere else. But we don't need that in the city, we just don't, we don't need that one. Worrying about how many people gonna sit here, sit there, how many people gonna be up on the, up on the podium, or whatever you, you call this stand thing? Then you're gonna compare things to, to out at Watermere. That's a totally different thing. I'm, I'm listening to all these comparisons, but they comparing things to the wrong thing. Like I said, I'm a writer. You compare, you, you compare oranges with oranges, you don't compare with apples, or grapes, or grapefruits, or nothing like that. What they gonna do, they gonna go up this, this pole one at a time? You gonna have people come out there just to sit, to be waiting to see if something happened? That's gonna be the main attraction. That's gonna be the main attraction, waiting to see if something happened. Now, if you do it, I will come to see that. Just sit there and wait, I'll bring my little basket with my food and my drinks and stuff, and I'll wait to see if something happened. No, that, that, this, 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 y'all do what you wanna do, you know, you always have, but do what you want. Somebody left their phone up here, but anyhow. No, no, no. And I don't talk for the city, and I don't talk on something like this. Now normally, when I come down here, I'll tell you, well, I talk for my block. I talk for the people in my area, because I walk around my area. And I'm gonna talk to the people in my area about this. 'Cause I got a couple fools up there that would love to go down that zip line. No, 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 this, this, this ain't it, this ain't it. And don't be giving away the waterfront. Don't be giving away the waterfront. You got one idea down here that might be questionable, where you saying, down, down on the dock here, Niagara, you know, you want people sitting up, sitting up in the air and all that out there, and you know, I mean, come on now, we can't have too much of that air, air thing going on. We don't have wings and we don't fly.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bibbs. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer testimony regarding the proposed use of the property?
Tecumseh Brown Eagle, seven sixteen State Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, one six five zero one. The reason why I was, I'm here, I do wanna address some things on the public, when it's time for the public forum to have a discussion. I know that Mr. Scott and their people have put great effort into economic development here in Erie, Pennsylvania, and I'm, the concern is that I'm trying to protect the city the best that I can, and there's a lot of violations. And you're dealing with, not just waterfront, you're deal, during, dealing with international waters, okay? And Canada's on the other side. In addition, for the last time, I will advise you all that you are on Indian land, okay? This is full, fully a reservation, okay? One hundred percent. This is no speculation, you could call the federal government and find out. And it's holding a treaty, I just came from Seneca Nation yesterday, it's holding a treaty to protect New York State. So if you violate, continue to violate, or not consult with indigenous people and have the UN come in, they're already looking at Erie, all right? I get calls from all over. This is a UN organization. They wanna know what's going on in, here in Erie, all right? So how am I gonna explain what's going on in Erie when we're not being consulted for economic development on our indigenous land? This is the last time that I'm gonna come here and say this without possibly a US attorney here, or a representative from the United Nations. I'm not threatening. What I'm saying is that we can work together. Mr. Scott's group are doing things that are causing attraction to Erie on a positive note. Maybe the zip line should be, you know, considered again, maybe that gentleman in the back should be working for or with Mr. Scott to make sure that the public is protected from, let's say- that the public is protected from, let's say, all kinds of issues in reference to public access, water access. Okay? So I know a lot of people, they think, oh, you know, it's threatening. No, I'm trying to show you to be attractable to even more economic development. All right? There's plans right now that you don't even know about, about someone coming in and hiring 180 people to work at $20 an hour at full benefit. All right? They call me every other day. No, they're not ready. You guys aren't ready yet. Okay? Because no one has come to talk to me about that. All right? Previous administrators, administrations, mayors and whatnot, consult with us. All right? So I will give the information to show you all the laws, the fact that this is Indian land. Ask Mrs. Sandberg. She knows that this is Indian land, that this is reservation land. It's not just Indian land. This is, has been reserved. Actually, Erie County and Crawford County. Okay? So I'm being real nice, and I'm trying to save and protect the city that I represented in a ring in Egypt, Saudi Arabia, South America. All right? Fighting the largest black belts on earth. A project like this needs extreme consideration. Tweak it. For Mr. Scott and these guys, and Mr. Bibbs, all you gotta do is tweak it. Get these people to come together and talk. The city has been doing a great job. I've been watching you. You go in, you need something, extremely helpful. Extremely helpful. You guys are walking into a good administration. Some, there were problems in other administrations. So what you do is get a committee of citizens to assist in reaching out to the rest of the public for economic development. If you don't have money in the city, it's going down. Nobody is gonna wanna come in. All right? This is a beautiful city. I lived in a lot of cities. All right? And this is one of the best cities on earth. You used to have the best water on earth. About 50 years ago, they, reason why I'm saying you had a brand new plant. All right? That's why I'm saying that you had the best water. We still have the best water. All right? It is a marketing tool. Hey, a part of these business developers, they should get with the general public. You must get with indigenous people, or this whole thing is shut down. Okay? The feds have come in. All right? And the US attorneys contacted me about something. So you need to work with people like Mr. Scott. He is not the only one. All right? As far as economic development, and there's conflicts in economic development. There's very little business diversity. The education is coming down. What do they do? What do, what do they do for the kids? Has anyone asked them, what do you do for the kids up there? They make things accessible to the kids. We want accessibility to the bayfront. He's willing to do it. Mr. Bibbs is willing to consult with them. The gentleman in the back can consult with them, and I think you all can come with a plan. You have one of the best cities on earth. Don't lose it. Peace.
Does that, is there anyone else that wishes to offer testimony?
Can you guys hear me all right? Even with the mask? Yeah? Okay, great. Do we have to state our name and such when we do the, okay, Sidney Zimmerman? Sidney, Sidney Zimmerman, 117 West 24th Street. Yeah, no worries. Okay, so, at the beginning of this meeting, Gary Horton brought up the fact that we continue to not use the tool of community benefit agreements, also known as CBAs. It was also brought up that y'all still have the power to confirm or deny this project. And I just wanna remind everybody that there's a saying, the golden rule, right? But there is another saying that has been said here before, that those who have the gold make the rules. And I just wanna remind folks that the gold in this instance is not money. The gold is the bayfront. The gold is our community. And so it has been brought up that, you know, if this project goes through, will we have times where there will be free admission for folks in Erie who wouldn't normally be able to afford going to a Scott's business? Whether it's Splash Lagoon, visiting a hotel, going to Oliver's, or in this case, the zip line? But that's not enough. Is that $5 million worth, plus the tax abatement from Lurda? In my opinion, it's not. So I just wanna remind folks that even if you gave like free admission, people still might not be able to get transportation there. And is our bayfront worth the trade of a free admission one day, or 365 days a year? I don't think it is. I think that for $5 million from the state of Pennsylvania, plus whatever money the city itself is losing from not being able to collect taxes from these people, it needs to be an equal trade off. So there's a real opportunity to ensure that folks are getting paid proper wages. There's a real opportunity to ensure that there is public access, the way that Liz and Jasmine have already pledged, that if, you know, you guys can't make a clear statement and plan and contract, that there is gonna be public spaces, they're not gonna be able to vote yes on this project. So I just wanna remind y'all that you guys are up here for a reason. It's because you have the power to do what is in the best interest of our community. And there have been times where I have felt like, and others in the community have felt like Erie has been failed by its leaders and their decisions to allow projects to move forward without asking enough questions, without taking enough time to ensure that it is in the best interest of the people who live here every single day. Not just the folks who are gonna come in for wrestling tournaments, not just the folks who are gonna come in and see Presque Isle during the summertime, but for people who live here day in and day out. So please use that power wisely. Please take your time. Do not rush, because once they start building and have built it, we're not gonna have another opportunity. So use your opportunities wisely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer testimony regarding the proposed use? Seeing no one that will bring a close to the public hearing. My understanding is that counsel is not in a position to vote tonight. Is that correct?
I would like to wait until the next meeting, but I don't know what the general, I think that this is a little bit more complicated than the last one was.
Well, and that's why I raised the issue. I think that unlike the prior proposal, there are some legal questions that have been raised, there are some specific development questions that have been raised that, a couple of them, I'd like to talk with counsel about it, but some of the, there are questions deal with zoning, some deal with engineering. And I think that it would be in counsel's best interest to ponder the testimony that you've heard today, get some questions addressed, and put it on your next agenda rather than vote on it tonight.
Anybody object to?
No, the table's not on there for a vote.
No, it, you have, you, typically, I don't believe that it would require a table. Typically, when counsel has a conditional use hearing, it goes on the next agenda. Counsel deviated from that procedure at the last hearing because of some time sensitivity. I don't believe that that time sensitivity is present in this circumstance, and I think there are some unique issues that counsel needs to address before you, you should be in a position to vote.
Thank you, Ed. Anybody object to that? Okay. Now, we would resume the public comment period of the meeting. And Frank, I sent you a text to see if, it was, I know there was one person who said she registered and she's been, I don't know if she ever got on, though. Not there? I think. Oh, yeah, thank you. I guess we're ready to resume, correct?
Is this self last?
Oh.
Ma'am? Good evening, counsel. Kathleen Schoff, 2437 East 43rd Street. I want to thank you for your commitment to Erie. This is wonderful that you don't mind being up here forever. I think that's just great. And thank you, Mayor Joe, for being present as well. I want to thank the city once again for providing all of their meetings on public access through social media. I was able to watch the recent land bank meeting on Monday, and they were talking about blighted properties with the land bank. And I noticed in the news about the West 16th or 17th Street house that may be up for demolition. But I really implore you to make sure that the people that have been, or the houses that have been waiting in line to get demolished, get demolished. I thought the property that was in the 800 block of East 25th Street had been demolished. And during my time on counsel, it had been four years in the making. And I just recently found out through a friend, and I did drive by the property this week, that that house is still there, and the police were at it recently as well. There, it appears to be a woman, and she put up curtains. But I mean, that house is a mess still, and it really needs to be taken care of. As well as the one on 7th and Payne area by Trotka's Market that had been in the news before. That house still sits waiting to be knocked down. And the one between the 6th and 700 block of Wallace Street. I do have pictures on my phone. I won't share them with you. It is appalling. The trash just ruins the entire block from 6th to 7th and Wallace Street. And it's probably more than that house, but something really needs to be done. So just really want to, I just wish we had ARP money or something, because these houses are not safe. People are still getting into them, and they're still causing safety issues and problems in the neighborhood. So thank you. I spoke in front of county council yesterday about safety for our students, and I talked about how we need to get the guns off of the streets. But I was talking to, about a need to address, and I guess that's what Gary's kiddos were talking about, before school and after school programs to really address the need, because there are so many latchkey students that are really needing that help and that security to be actively engaged when they are not in school. And that's so important. It breaks my heart that baseball is no longer in Erie, and I'm sure, you know, there's lots of reasons for that. But we really continue to try to focus on engaging our youth at the young ages. And I don't know if there is a way to find out how many kiddos out there are needing a place before school. I also talked about the olden days when I was a kid and the BP sign. And when I walked home from school two miles when I did, and I would look out for that BP sign, knowing that, okay, if something happens to me, I can run and knock on that person's house, because that's a safe house. So we need to address safety, and unfortunately, there's too much craziness going on, and not everyone is safe. I also would like Public Works, possibly, to hire people temporarily just to start picking up the trash. The whole Buffalo Road area from a certain point to Parade Street is absolutely really bad in need of, or needs to be picked up.
I know we don't usually interrupt people when, but you're former counsel person, and those BP signs, that stood for what? Block parent?
Block parent, right.
Yeah, you're right. Those, I don't know whatever happened to those, but thank you for reminding us about those.
My name's Fred Attip. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. Kathy reminds me about parks. Really, parks should not be under Public Works. I'm, I'm not thrilled at all with what I see them doing in Baldwin Park. I hear about things going on in Roger Young Park. I feel like they've given away parts of Perry Square to the Kiwanis who have put up, I'm sorry, I'm a native plant gardener, and I just don't have a garden full of ugly black mulch and non-native plants. It would be nice to see some native plants growing in Perry Square. And actually, I talked to one of the people yesterday at county council who, who had a lot to say about, about the recent killing of the seven-year-old. And, and I said, I would love to establish, and apparently, you don't even have to buy a repository sale. There are, through the county redevelopment authority, adopt a lot. I would love to work with them to adopt a lot and to do some biodiversity planting and work with kids who wanna learn about that. That's part of, one of my passions. The other passion, as some of you know, is pedestrian access. And I have shared with some people, something from the CDC that talks about equity and health and sidewalk access. And I'm just, you know, I've been at this, I don't know how long, but yesterday, I sent LeAnn and some of you 10 different emails about places where there was no signage or ridiculously poor signage about an impending sidewalk closure. What's going on? Why are people, why is the Catholic Church? Why, why is Burton's Funeral Home? Why is the project with Erie Malleable Iron? The Warner Theater? Why are they allowed to, and something going on at Ethan Holland? We saw it tonight. There was no, well, the signs were maybe there, but I can tell you that Shelley's guide dog would've walked right around that sign and walked her right into the chain link fence. And right next to the chain link fence was a sign indicating it was a route to Pfeiffer Burley School. I thought that was hilarious. It was all the way around. The sidewalk was closed, but there were no signs to tell you it was there. I'm concerned that the art process ought to be helping to install more accessible pedestrian signals, to repair sidewalks. I talked to Jacqueline Spry, and they're not even using all of the data from the Act of Erie. All of us put the SharePoint stuff on the computer program, but they're not accessing that. She says they're gonna do things where people can put projects on there. Why aren't we using all the stuff that we put on Act of Erie? Buffalo Road, that's so full of garbage? Those sidewalks are not maintained. They should be maintained. And maybe if the sidewalks were maintained, there wouldn't be so much garbage there. Why aren't we using the art money to make our sidewalks more walkable? To make them safe and accessible? to make them safe and accessible for people with disabilities so that people can be healthy and walk in this community? Why should Traffic Engineering be spending its maintenance money to put in accessible pedestrian signals that should have been put in when the signals around Perry Square were reconfigured a few years ago? It would have been much cheaper for them to put them in then. But now they're going to be nine, six or $9,000 apiece. Right now, there's no accessible pedestrian signals on Peach or Sassafras. You got a picture of Rudy and his cane, but he doesn't have any accessible pedestrian signals for when he wants to get downtown. And if you want to get to the courthouse, there's no accessible pedestrian signals either to help you get to the courthouse. I would like to see some way within the art process to get some money to help pay for better access for people with disabilities in this town and to fix sidewalks, not just to put in bike paths, but to fix sidewalks. I will also remind you, it's April 20th. There will be snow next year. Please fix the problem that we had this year. Please fix the problem of snow removal so that we don't block street crossings like we did last year. Please fix it now, and please, please do what it takes in the permitting process. If people are getting permits and then they're not providing sidewalk access, charge them for the permits. Hire another inspector. There's only one person inspecting that stuff for Traffic Engineering. Please take care of these things. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Freda.
Good evening, Council. My name is Rod Jones, 1003 East 38th Street. I'm here on behalf of the Metro 21 Youth Football Program and the 400 kids, the 400 legitimate kids that we have in our program. First off, I want to say about the young child that was murdered the other day. Of course, he has our blessings. His father was murdered the same way. But getting back to what I'm here for. We are the largest youth football, youth sports program in this city. Now, we've asked time and time again for some security at our football games. We've been denied every time. We went to the Sheriff's Department and asked, we would ask to pay them. We get no response, and they tell us no. Now, with all due respect, I know Mr. Witherspoon. I come past his basketball games. I see countless Erie Police Department cars parked outside. And I'm sure council is going to tell me that we can't get any type of representation to derail some of the things that could happen just by having a police presence at our games. We play at Erie Veterans Stadium. We can't get that. We have 400, we are not a league here that's saying they handle at-risk children. We do it every day. We do it from May to October, and we get $0 from anybody in this city. That league is run by myself, my wife, and my son. We are asking, Council, you're sitting up here. I know you have the ability to help this legitimate league out. We are documented. We have 400 kids, 24 teams. There is no reason that we live in this city and nobody gives us anything. We should get something from this city. Those are 400, if there's 400 kids, that means there's a potential of 400 taxpayers, maybe 800 taxpayers if they have a mother and a father. Now, we know the violence that goes in this city. The kid that was shot at East Erie High, he played in our league last year. We kept that kind of trouble away with no help. We need some help in protecting our children. We're not even asking you for no money. We're not asking for money. We're asking to use the help come and protect our kids and keep trouble away from the good kids that's in Metro 21 Youth Football League. And I'm sure you can do it. I mean, don't talk about it. Don't be, don't just be politicians. Be people. Be people and come help where help is needed. The other thing I want to discuss as far, and it's all about my football league. You know, we're talking about the taking away crime and violence. Violence has been going on in this city forever. I'm in the funeral business, okay? So I prepare slide shows, memorials for 700 people. I do it all the time. And I see kids, I see the kids that look like us. And I, when I say that, they're minority kids. We know that, and we do have a problem in our community. And we can't expect anybody who doesn't look like us to care about us if we don't care about us. I get that. But I care about our kids. And when I say our kids, if you're white or black, you are inner-city kids. So you face some of the same problems if you live in inner-city. And I tell my kids in Metro that every day. You are my kids. And I want you people, if you care 10% of what I care, you will help us at Metro 21 take care of these kids and the safety of these kids. We should have some type of protection. This is, we got Erie Police here. Why can't we get that kind of protection? Now, I'm going to write you. I'm going to write letters to the council. I'm going to write letters to you, Mr. Mayor. And I need, we need some help. And there's no reason we shouldn't have it. If I see 10 cars parked over at Mr. Spoon's league, why can't I have 400 kids documented? We are the largest league in this city, and we get nothing, zero. Let's get some help. God bless you.
Sir? You still play on Sundays?
We play every Sunday.
Okay, where at?
Veterans Stadium. We start at 9 o'clock, and we're there till about 7:00 in the evening. We play 10 games every Sunday.
Is that though behind the Boys and Girls Club, or is that?
Erie Veterans Stadium.
Oh, up at the stadium?
Erie Veterans Stadium. We play there every week. And we've asked for help. We've asked for a police presence. We went and offered to pay the Sheriff's Department, and we get nothing. It's almost like, it's almost like they want something to happen, and then they'll come.
Can you tell me the age range of all your kids? You said 400, so you said 7 to 15?
Ages 5 to 13. Legitimate 400, we, I'm not a person that sits here and say, hey, we got a program for you, and we're going to try and call Rod Jones to get the kids to say that they belong to us. We've had that. These are our kids. These are my kids. 400 documented, birthdays, addresses, schools, I have it all. And I've been doing this almost 30 years. Yes, Mayor. In fact, Mr. Mayor, we asked you to come to our opening day. And we were called, and they told us that you would not be present. Your office. We talked to them the entire month of August 2018, and we wrote them. We called them directly. In fact, you're the one who told me to contact your office. I saw you on the floor when I was going to get the permit for Roger Young, Roger Young Field, and you told me the proper procedures. I followed those procedures, and of course, nothing.
Well, we thank you for coming and bringing this to our attention today. We will follow up.
For the record, there was only two police cars.
Well, well, I'm saying in the vicinity, they travel.
I know, I know what you're saying, my brother.
But we get nothing.
I know what you're saying.
Okay.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor, Council? My name is Ta'wan Taylor, 843 East 6th Street here in Erie, PA. I wanted to come and say I'm representing a nonprofit organization, Career and Dreams, something we started back in March of 2020. But a better way of saying this, I'm here to represent all of the youth in the city of Erie. I'm coming because I'm confused, and I don't know what to do. I see a lot of things on the news about money coming in, ARP, and this, this, and that, and it's supposed to help the kids that are most affected. Then I see gun violence, and I see kids that are most affected being shot. Then I see more stuff on the news. But the money isn't going to the kids that are being most affected. There's always an excuse on why we can't help our kids, whether it's, this is my favorite one. You're a new organization. I worked for the Boys and Girls Club for 10 years. I worked for the Erie School District for 10 years. I worked for the JFK, Martin Luther King Center, Trinity Center. What's new? If you sign with an older organization, then you'll get notice. We in the same position. Got some, these kids, all of our ideas, all of our work come from the very kids that we ignore. Most of our, we deal with the kids, and I hate to say it, that people don't want. Oh, they don't read too well. Let's get them out of here. They're going to mess up our numbers. Oh, they can't do this. Let's get them out of here. Let's go to mess up our numbers. We go to Harbor Creek Youth Services, Perseus House, which is a school district. The kids, Emerson Gritley, Sarah Reed, these kids that we don't have a plan for. What are these kids going to do when they get out of school? When they graduate, these kids with the learning disabilities, the kids that have the behavioral problems. What's their future? Oh, to prison. We still doing the school-to-prison pipeline. So we came up with the school-to-career pipeline. We have over 20 local businesses who cut prices, who cut stuff more sometimes. He's not here no more. Greg Hayes. 15 minority children are able to go to North Coast Flight School at like 30% of the cost. I work three jobs. I can't afford that. I ask for help, no. Oh, new organization. Or is it, am I a new organization? Or is it the kids that you're trying to help? We still got to fill these other buildings that we keep building. We build prisons. That's a big lucrative business. I don't get or understand what to do. One of the kids said to me, Mr. U, I hear you do a lot of stuff. How come it's always just you? How come you don't get no help? I said, I get help. Bitch don't get no money. People will come and volunteer. We got some of the best citizens. I've, if I post something on Facebook and say, hey, we got 20 kids going to gymnastics, 20 minority kids going to gymnastics. We walked into Erie Gymnastics, it was two minorities in there. We added 20. The whole room stopped. How are you paying for this? The owner gave me a deal. You, here's 80% off for you. You're doing a lot. My city? Keep going. Get another job. Work another job. I don't know what to do. I really, seriously, don't know what to do. I could look, it was funny what Mr. Jones said. He said, we got 400 legitimate kids. Because I get phone calls when you can't fill your grant. I need 25 kids. I need 40 kids. I need 60 kids. And they get them. But they call me to get them. When I call and say, hey, I need some help with these kids. We need training for these kids. It's a new organization, sign on with another one. You got to get them half your money so they can do something. Then you can help with this. I've already did the most with the less. We just need time for our kids to really advance. Prevention and giving them an opportunity that they never had is the way to advance. Give them something to dream about. We can't keep just putting money in law enforcement. And don't get it wrong, come to my house, you know, calling the police, a lot of police. But we got to get our kids to not even be at that level. We just waiting on them to mess up when we could be encouraging and building them up. This, it's just, I heard the buzzer go off. That's my time. I just, I could go on and on and on all night because our kids are being ignored. Unless you work or you're doing something with a certain agency. That's blowing my mind. Thank you.
Howard, would you, would you mind waiting one second? Ashley Taylor has been waiting for hours to speak about Global Youth Service Day. If you don't mind, she's online. And I really appreciate it if you, if you would allow her to go next. You okay, Frank?
Can you speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you, Ashley. Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. I was having some technical difficulties late earlier. So I just want to thank you for giving me another opportunity to come on in. I hear myself echoing really, really badly, so I can't really, is there anything I can do?
Headphones, but we do, we do not have the echo here. We are able to hear you.
Okay, so I'll just try and go as I am. Okay, so I just want to come and just give you a little bit of information about an event that we have coming up, this community service event. I'm representing Youth Leadership Institute of Erie at 1306 East Lake Row. And we are hosting our annual Global Youth Service Day on Saturday, April 30th, 2022, which is about a week and a half away. It is one of the largest community service events worldwide, and we are just trying to get the word out to get as many youth involved as possible because this is an opportunity for youth to get involved to help unify their community because we have several different cleanup projects and different service events as well as gain six hours of community service. So the event will be hosted over at ECAT under Ms. Daria Delton. Registration will start at 8:00 AM from 8:00 to 9:00. And then at about 9:15, we will have all of the youth be dispersed to different spots in the community that we partnered with. So just a quick briefing of what some of those places are. We have the Anna Shelter, the Humane Society. We have a couple gardens. We have a garden of our own we'd like to start. We have something over at Press Isle, the new lighthouse. They have an organization that they just started there. So we're going to send some kids down there to help and just learn about the light, the lighthouse and things like that. And we just want to get the word out. We have Judge Erin Marucci now, formerly Conal Lee, but now Marucci. She's our honorary spokesperson and our chairperson. She's championing the event. She's been very, very great to us, coming and just speaking and helping us spread awareness about the event. And we also have a live performance this year after the event. Event usually lasts from 8:00 AM till about 3:00 PM. And then over at East High School, we'll have a concert featuring Brian King Joseph, who is an electric violinist. He is known for being the runner-up for America's Got Talent, Season 13. And he's also done work with a lot of big artists, like Chris Brown, Machine Gun Kelly, Snoop Dogg, and stuff like that. I thought he'd be a great person to bring in because our event is themed Mental Remix, and it's to aid to the mental health of all of the youth in the community, especially with everything going on right now. And Brian King Joseph is a very, he's very young. He's 28, and he suffers from a very rare neurological disease where he doesn't have feeling in his fingers or in his toes, and he plays the electro violin. So I just feel like he's obviously had to overcome a lot of obstacles to get where he is right now. And eventually, unfortunately, he will come to a point where he won't have feeling throughout his entire body. So he won't be able to play the violin anymore. He's a very, very, very talented guy, though. If you don't know who he is, I would really encourage you to look him up. And I think it just will be a lot of fun. The concert will be over at East High School. The doors will open at 4:00 AM, and the concert will be from 5:00 to 7:00. And we also have some opening acts from like the Erie Dance Studio and just a couple of our talented youth. And we also have some opening acts from like the Erie Dance Studio and just a couple of our talented youth. So it's just gonna be a lot of fun. We wanna get the word out. I have some flyers and stuff. I wish I could have been in person so that I can show the flyers. But I will email that over to you so you can see it. And we just want a presence. We're looking for as many elected officials and as many leaders in the community as possible to be there to show support, so, show support to the kids. Right now, we have about two hundred fifty registered youth that will be there on that day, out servicing the community. So I just wanted to come and, and pass it along and pass that, share the information in hopes to get some support from everyone.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you for your patience. So we'll make sure everybody on council has the information about the kickoff for Global Youth Service Day that day. Thank you very much. And thank you, Howard, for waiting. You ready?
Good evening. My name is Howard Bibbs. I reside at twenty-nine thirty-one Chestnut Street, Erie, PA. I am here today, number one, to say thank you to our refuge company. During the month of April, every Wednesday on my block, there's either was a storm, blizzard. I mean, it was just terrible. The weather was terrible. The weather was terrible. And they did a real good job, excellent job. You know, I got up the next morning, like seven o'clock in the morning, just went outside to see how much trash was still gonna be out there on the yard. Is that my timer?
I told you, you lost a minute.
Well, they did an excellent job. So I, I'd hope that get across to them. Normally, when I call up there, I, I speak with Pat or Haley. They help out a lot in terms of this, if something is missing. They get the guys to come back out to pick it up and so forth. So they do an excellent job. So I think they should be told that. Second, I came to talk about is the fee for the sewers. One thing that I wanted to impress is we're going through a period of time where inflation is gonna be high. Interest is gonna be high. We're still dealing with COVID. We're still dealing with the fact that people, the workforce has not came back yet. We're dealing with a lot of different things. And we're also dealing with COVID on a coat, on a global structure. But we're dealing with gross domestic product versus gross national product. So we're dealing with all this domestic things. I was reading an article in AARP where it was talking about seniors and seniors' social security next year. We might not even get anything. This morning, I heard that the gas company, due to the fact that we use so much gas this winter. Gas is going up. I'm not talking about the gas at the gas pump. I'm talking about the gas to heat your house. So the price of everything is rising. Okay? And I want you to keep one thing in mind. We pay sewers on our bill. Now that is something that cannot be changed. Now, but like with anything that you read or write, there's a beginning and there's an end. And you have to reinstate or whatever. I understand writing, for like I tell you, I'm a writer and I write grants. I know there's a beginning and there's an end when it comes to a time span. But as far as the fee is concerned, if you guys would have passed that, that would have been something that you can never take away. Never take away. And so I hope that the next time that come up, you vote the same way that you voted on that next time. Times are hard. Now maybe people don't, don't think times are hard. But I, I know everybody is asking for something. Everybody wants something. I'm not the only one. Everybody in this room done asked for something. Times are hard. And these are the wrong times. These are the wrong times. The water problem i- is, is, is one reason why people aren't here. That's one reason people got out of here. Just leaving here and, and, and there's, and there's, if you go around the neighborhood, you see houses up for, 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 for mortgages, you know, to be bought. Now, if you go to the realtors like you did before, they're gonna say, well, that's usual. Usual my eyeball. No, it isn't. No, it isn't. That isn't usual. That isn't usual stuff all the time. You know, like this is the period of time where this year goes on. People getting ready to leave again. People are saving their few little dollars to leave. I'm trying to get people to come back. I talk to people. Now, I might step over the boundary a little bit from what I, what I hear. But anyhow, my thing is to get things right whereby people will come back and wanna be here in Erie. That fee is something that would have been with us for life. And then as far as myself, I'm an optimizer. I worked as an optimizer. I understand that when you lay pipe for sewers, if you're, in front of your house is ten feet, you walk off ten feet and you put the pipes down. Now, that's what we should be paying for. That's what everybody should be paying for. How much pipe is being laid in front of their house? Now, even after the pipe is laid, what is on that bill is gonna always be on that bill. Even when we got the pipes in the ground, we still gonna have to pay a sewer, a sewer fee. If you'd have passed the fee, we'd have been still having to have to pay that. Now, I'm talking in, in this industry now. I'm talking industry now. I worked in industry. And I worked as an optimizer. Y'all look it up. I understand, I understand purchasing of, of items. I understand accounting. That'd have been with us for life, even after you put the sewer in. Those bills gonna be with us for life. And that ain't right. Thank you.
Frank, was there anybody else online waiting to speak?
Hi there. Sydney Zimmerman, one seventeen West Twenty-Fourth Street. Earlier during the public hearing, I forgot to bring up the point about the Bayfront Parkway and the plans from PennDOT. And how, how do those intersect what the Scots are trying to do? Because from my understanding, that makes the Parkway a bigger transportation road? And so putting a zip line over that, you know, I, I do think there are some valid concerns about like rubbernecking or safety of folks who are on that. Although I know there are zip lines over Las Vegas, so many things can be done. But just, we need to be able to consider that because unlike Las Vegas, we don't have crazy projects going on all the time. So in thinking about money and thinking about how the city has control over money, I'm just looking at the agenda here. And I just wanna bring to note that, you know, there's a lot of, there's ordinances appropriating funds. I, it might not matter to most of y'all, but to me, seeing that there is about a half a million, over a half a million dollars worth of funds that are being asked to be given to the Bureau of Police from the unappropriated and anticipated revenue sector of our budget is a lot to me. Especially since I know that our police force is the biggest piece of our budget anyways. So I would just ask you guys to thoughtfully consider these, these projects that they're asking for money for and be sure that they are in the best interest of our citizens, especially since we don't have a Citizens Review Board the way that Gary had mentioned earlier. And also, I was in here earlier paying a parking ticket. And this is a personal concern. I had paid that ticket on January twenty-seventh, had no problems, did not have an issue of, hey, you have inadequate funds. Apparently, only half of the amount was taken out of my bank account. But unfortunately, in City Hall records, it showed that I didn't pay any of the funds. So I got a collections bill, said the collections bill was a hundred twenty-five dollars. Called collections. Collections told me I actually owed six hundred seventy-five dollars because of, you know, extra fees incurred. I only got that one collections bill in April. And I had paid in January. And these tickets were from previous to January. Shouldn't have ever happened, honestly. But my concern is that I know that council has voted on raising the prices of tickets. And that has gone through. And then on top of that, the fees that are associated with tickets when they are not paid. Even though those rules have changed, I have not seen any parking rules go up in the wealthier neighborhoods. They've stayed in the poorer neighborhoods. So these burdens are already being put on people, are being put on people who are already struggling to pay. And not getting notification sooner that there are these, these issues going on from y'all's end that I didn't pay from my end that some, something went wrong. So I just wanna make sure that when we're instituting new technology in our cities' practices for collecting debts, that we're making sure that things aren't getting missed and people aren't getting charged extra, extra money. Because y'all are bootin'. You are not messing around. And if I didn't have a space to park other than the street, my car would probably be booted and I would be confused as to why that is. So that doesn't seem like it's in the best interest of our citizens. Maybe it's just a one-time case and I'm the fluke. But if this is happening to more folks, seven hundred dollars is nothing to, to poo-poo at. That's a lot of money. So I just wanted to make that note. But while I was in here paying that parking ticket, I heard that the mayor would be requesting reimbursement for security systems put into his house after the bomb threat that was left on the car, as well as the break-in into his house. I don't think that taxpayers should have to pay for that. I understand that you're under scrutiny because you are the mayor and that is why, most likely, people are targeting, especially with the bomb threat. But personally, I do not think that taxpayers should have to pay that bill. Especially since the work was done by a company from Buffalo, New York. It's not even supporting our local economy. So that is what I have to say. And I ended just in time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think that concludes the public comment. I don't know if this is a record or not. You're ready to go on, Lauren? A record for not doing, yet getting to anything else on the agenda.
Madam President, I'm moved by this. Second.
We gotta do the first reading, so don't we? Okay.
Council file number sixteen two seventy-three. An ordinance appropriating the sum of one hundred and ten dollars from appropriated and anticipated revenue from donations made in the memory, memory of Robert Lutton. This is for the Bureau of Fire. Sponsored by Mr. Brzinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, bill number sixteen two seventy-three, and now known as official file ordinance fourteen twenty-two, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance fourteen twenty-two by ye seven na zero. Council file number sixteen two seventy-four. An ordinance appropriating the sum of one hundred and two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is civilian intel analyst PCCD Jag year number two. Sponsored by Mr. Brzinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, bill number sixteen two seventy-four, and now known as official file ordinance fifteen twenty-two, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Ms. Allen. City Council pass official file ordinance fifteen twenty-two by ye seven na zero. Council file number sixteen two seventy-five. An ordinance appropriating the sum of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and provided for the expenditure thereof. The twenty twenty-two City of Erie Comprehensive Opiate Stimulate and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program for the Bureau of Police. Sponsored by Mr. Brzinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, bill number sixteen two seventy-five, and now known as official file ordinance sixteen twenty-two, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council pass official file ordinance sixteen twenty-two by ye seven na zero. Council file number sixteen two seventy-six. Yes. An ordinance appropriating the sum of fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the twenty twenty-two Project Safe Neighborhood for the Bureau of Police. Sponsored by Mr. Brzinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance, bill number sixteen two seventy-six, and now known as official file ordinance seventeen twenty-two, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council pass official file ordinance seventeen twenty-two by ye seven na zero. Council file number sixteen two seventy-seven. An ordinance appropriating the sum of twelve million eight hundred and one two hundred and fifty dollars, eight hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof from the general fund surplus and will be used to fund the City of Erie DECD Loan Fund, six million dollars, and the redevelopment authority of the City of Erie Loan Fund, six million eight hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance, bill number sixteen two seventy-seven, and now known as official file ordinance eighteen twenty-two, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council pass official file ordinance eighteen twenty-two by ye seven na zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number sixteen two seventy-eight. An ordinance appropriating the sum of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-one from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, as a grant to the Enterprise Zone revolving loan fund and will be utilized for renovation costs associated with the West A Street Anchor Buildings Project. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson. The council file ordinance, number sixteen two seventy-eight, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen two seventy-eight by ye seven na zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen two seventy-nine. An ordinance appropriating the sum of two hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funding is from a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection's Growing Greener Grant. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance, number sixteen two seventy-nine, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance, number sixteen two seventy-nine, by ye seven na zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen two eighty. An ordinance appropriating the sum of thirty-seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funding is from a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection's Coastal Zone Management Grant. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance, number sixteen two eighty, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16280 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16281, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $90,115.67 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of the City of Erie Milling and Asphalt Resurfacing Federal Aid, Local Routes, Cherry Street, PennDOT Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Agreement, R2201001, MPMS 116512, ECMS 116512. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance, Bill number 16281, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16281 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. This takes us to new business.
And Ed, I just want to clarify that it says the public hearing may be followed by a vote from City Council, but we don't have to do anything to take this up at a different time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Just wanted to make sure, like, if we're moving the balance, that we wouldn't, like, accidentally...
No, you would be placing this on your next agenda for consideration.
Mel?
Madam President, I'm moved to bounce.
Second.
Separations?
There's a change on number 16 of new purchase orders. The wording has been changed to installation of a home security system for the mayor in the amount of $44,2160.
Separate that.
Madam President, we discussed that in chamber, and we said that was going to be pulled.
No, I think we said that...
We didn't come to that conclusion.
Yeah, we didn't come to that conclusion.
Separate number eight.
The redevelopment authority?
Yes.
For the transfer?
Any other separations? Voting on the balance, correct, Lori?
Mm-hmm. Moving on the balance of the agenda. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Separated number eight. Resolved by the City Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue agreements with the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie totaling $6,801,250 to carry out the following loan programs. $1,963,500 for the redevelopment rental investment. $2,571 and $250 for the redevelopment housing rehab loans. $425,000 for the Redevelopment Authority Minority Contractor Loans. $841,500 for the redevelopment homeownership incentive loans. And $1 million for the redevelopment housing new program.
Discussion? Discussion?
I guess it's up to me. I want to clarify something on number eight. I am not against the Redevelopment Authority, and we approved giving them this money. As one of the persons who approved it during last council, they gave strict stipulations that they would be able to meet the benchmarks, that they would be able to follow the ARP guidelines, and that they would be able to execute in the fashion that was agreed upon. And now that agreement has changed, and so I want to make everyone aware of that it has changed. And in the changing of it, I believe the city loses control over some of the programming and how it's benchmarked in its ability to have the funds returned if they are not utilized in the proper term, in, during the proper term, and in the proper fashion. And so I just wanted to make, and the fact that it's being run through the City Council, through the city's general fund, and being used as revenue replacement when it isn't actually revenue replacement, just doesn't sit well with me.
Would it be okay with council if I asked the solicitor to do the same explanation you did for us in caucus about this? Just, I think, because the public didn't get to hear everything that was said in there. But we have a disagreement of opinion here, which is fine. But if you don't mind, if that's okay?
I could take a shot. The, the idea of the transfer to the Redevelopment Authority is that the cities, the city planned to use ARP funds for a revolving loan fund, 6.8 million for a revolving loan fund. And every year, the money would be paid back over time. The problem is that with the ARP's final rule, that in essence, at the end of a four-year period, the federal government will look to the city and ask if there is any money that has not been spent. If the city operates a revolving loan fund and gets money paid back, then at the end of that four-year period, the city will have some amount or all of that money in its hand, and it would be required to pay that money back to the federal government. So the way to achieve the same goal would be to transfer the money to the Redevelopment Authority. They would operate the program. At the end of the four years, the federal government would come to us and say, "Do you have any money left over?" And we would say, "No," because we've transferred or spent that money on the Redevelopment Authority. The theory is that now the Redevelopment Authority could continue that loan program, which was what was designed in the city's mind as a program that would go in perpetuity. I'm not here to say if it's a good or bad idea, that's up to council. But the reason it went from being a city program to a redevelopment program is because at the end of the four years, the city has to be able to say, "We spent all of the money," or you'll be required to pay it back.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys?
No.
Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Resolution passes yea six, nay one. We have a resolution resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue a purchase order to Doyle Security Systems for installation work of a home security system for the mayor in the amount of $44,2160. Discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah, I brought this up in caucus. I'm totally against it. I'm totally against it also because of the way it was brought to us. The thing was changed, we, we got the agenda on Saturday or Sunday, and they changed the agenda. They changed this 16 between, I don't know, when was it, Lori, Monday, Tuesday?
It was Tuesday, and...
It was changed Tuesday.
Which is still actually enough time.
We didn't have a look at it until tonight. The bottom line is very clear. We have to stop living out of fear and anxieties. All of us face problems. We can get run over by a car when we walk out of here. Should we build a fence around us when we walk? I don't want to be late with this. I call for a vote, and I'm going to vote no.
Any other discussion?
I, I was always a no on the situation. As a Lower East Sider, I grew up on Fifth and Wallace, and I always had security as an issue. So for me, it was something that my family handled alone. And I feel as though that is a private expense. It's not an expense of the taxpayers. When you're in the public eye, you're going to get certain eyes, and you're going to have certain wanderers and opinions and health and, you know, safety concerns. But I don't think it's the taxpayers' responsibility to cover those, especially given that the mayor is a pretty good salary job.
Anyone else?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say that I am not against security for the mayor or a build-out of a security protocol for our mayor. Lots of mayors have details and have security that's underwritten by the public. One of the problems we do have is our mayor lives in a private residence. And, and so it kind of blurs the lines on what's appropriate. And so I, I am a no for this particular expenditure, but I, I look forward to helping our mayor even with a detailed plan to ensure security. It's, is a responsibility of the city.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Troop is going to speak.
Madam President, I, I was a yes initially on this. I agree with Michael, Mr. Keys, about, you know, you know, as a leader of the city, we should somehow make sure that we ensure your safety. You are important to our city, the work you do. I know they said you missed an event today, but I think that's very rare, that you do miss an event. They were talking about the banquet earlier, about the Little Kids League or whatever you were talking about with...
Football games.
The football games. And I, and I think that you go to a lot of events. I see you around in a lot of different places. So, you know, you put your, you do put your time in when it comes to that. The reason why I'm no right now is, I was talking to a lady who I know personally who took bullet shots into her house. And she was asking me, you know, she'd lived in her house over 25, 30 years. Should she move out of her house? Because she was scared to live there. And, you know, that's a real, you know, someone who's taking bullet shots into their house, and there's, she, she can't afford a security system or that type of thing. So when I thought about that, I said, you know, we have people who live in neighborhoods with our city now who are scared to death in their houses that they've lived in for 30 years, but they have no way of securing themselves. So I just think right now, my, I think we should come up with a plan. And, and like Mr. Brzezinski said, come up with a better process that's wide open, that everybody knows about. And that, that's how I feel right now.
I'd like to add something here. I think we kind of didn't want to focus on the mayor because we don't want to put him in any more danger. The fact that people are living in fear is really not a reason, and I'm not, I, I understand how people are going to vote here. It's not going to pass, I don't think. When I first saw this request, I did some research, and exactly as Michael said, there are mayors, not just the mayor of New York City, or not just the mayor of Washington DC or of Chicago, who have security details, which cost a lot more than $4,421 for a security system. So I hope that council, if you want a security detail for the mayor, there's going to be a lot of research involved in how much that is going to cost if you're talking about a person or more than one person. Yesterday, when discussion about this was blowing up, I just did a simple Google search. I probably don't want to give anybody ideas. The term I put in was threats against mayors, and it came up over and over and over again. The most recent one was the mayor in Boise, Idaho. We are living in times where even the anger in some of the emails about people opposed to this reflects the way people are treating public officials. Women officials in particular are under threat. Let's just, it's as easy as just Googling that. So it's not going to pass, but I am going to vote yes. Again, I want to reiterate that this was never intended to cover all of us up here. I do think... It was, it was, that was not the language that, that we put through. Somehow, that got goofed up, so. You're going to talk to Chuck?
I was, I was really hoping this would be up here and that nobody would say anything, and we would just vote. That was really my goal. And I feel like this is the most personal thing that we've had on our agenda, and I'm really sorry about that. And I wrote you an email of my personal reasonings behind that. And I realize this is all public, but I feel like this one's a very personal one, and I care for your personal safety, and I'm sorry about my vote.
Call for the vote.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski?
No.
Ms. Flores?
No.
Mr. Keys?
No.
Mr. Nelson?
No.
Mr. Troop?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Motion fails to pass, yea two, nay five.
Now we go to committee reports?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm going to say two things, and then we're going to see if we can zoom through the committee reports. We have a study session a week from Thursday on rental inspections, and we also, so that would, we're trying to figure out what, what we need to improve our rental inspection program in general, and also look at that in terms of short-term rentals. And we had a lot of different comments tonight about, you know, youth and, you know, really, all of our hearts are concerned about what's been going on in the city. And there's a, maybe the mayor is going to mention this. There's a press conference at 11 o'clock here tomorrow with Unified Erie to present a unified front on how we're going to address ongoing violence. I did go today with, the mayor was there. We also heard people saying that, you know, the answer isn't just with police. I was at the Strengthening Police and Community Partnership breakfast today at Strong Vincent Middle School, and there were young people who were there from Strong Vincent Middle School, but also invited from Emerson Gridley, the program that is there. Couldn't stay for the whole thing, because Chuck Nelson and I went to Pennsylvania Municipal League Luncheon. I was really impressed with the interaction between, you know, the district attorney was there, the police officers were there, the mayor was there, Ken Nixon from the school district. There are, we hear a lot of bad things. A lot of bad things going on. We hear, we're hearing about programs that we, I didn't know existed. And somebody's saying, "Well, why aren't we getting money for this?" And I don't know, didn't know anything about that. Never forget that there are a lot of good things going on, and people sometimes want to give up hope. What I saw at Strong Vincent Middle School was an amazing attempt to, to reach youth. And Mel, there were some requests there for lighted basketball courts. And I said I would make sure that the person, the young person who had that request would know how to get in contact with you. All right, so let's just go, start with Chuck. If you don't have a committee report, just say so. But if you have something to say, let's, we'll go quickly.
All right. I had a sewer authority meeting. They, they affirmed that they'd be matching a community economic development grant that they got from the state, so the authority is going to be matching that million-dollar to million-dollar now. So that was a logistical thing that's an easy approval, and it means our city has a million to fix sewer, sewer plant. Yeah, it's late enough that, I appreciate a lot of the public input and a little bit of Mike's concerns about ARP money as final rule heads come out, and some of the flexibility that gives us with revenue replacement. There's some room that hopefully we can, that we can still take care of the youth in a way where we're investing in them instead of, as Mr. Taylor had suggested. So, it's a lot of the, a lot of the public comments resonated well with me today, and Lamont's comments too, anyways.
Mel?
No report, Madam President.
No report, okay. Mel?
Madam President, no report today.
Michael?
No report today, Mel.
A very small one. I did have our roundtable meeting with the IT innovation guest list. There was 22 members that were all on the call and in the meeting. We are going to follow up, Amy Murdoch is leaving on Friday, so she's in the middle of transferring jobs, so a little bit of commotions going on, but we will follow up because a lot of the people who were on the call really care about this.
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the initiative on that. I didn't go to the meeting, but I saw that a lot of good stuff, a lot of good stuff that you are moving forward on. Thank you. Ed?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. One of them, last meeting, I talked about a task force, and I looked into it rather closely since the last meeting, and one of my ideas was maybe to get retired policemen, agents, FBI agents, things like that, together in a task force. I found out that most of the time when these guys retire, they don't keep their active carry. In other words, they are not qualified to carry a gun, so there's a whole lot of problems with that. I also found out that there's nine, I think, maybe eight, I don't want to exaggerate, task forces out there. I don't know what they're doing, but they tell me they need money. Probably the best one, from what I understand, is Reverend Brock's over at Eagles Nest. He's trying to get the parents involved, that the parents become players in the kids' lives, which is probably a very, very important thing. But anyway, just wanted you to know, I did not forget about it. I didn't just say it last month and walk away from it. It just doesn't seem feasible with all those other ones that are already in action. Other than that, that's it. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Do we ask Teresa now?
I don't have that question.
No report? Okay. Ed?
No report.
No report.
Really? So, we're done?
Adhered.
Oh, let's hear it.
Do you have to go to work now?